Okay. This meeting of the Florida Planning Board, public hearing Wednesday, June 8th, 5:30 PM. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. And present we have Mario Luciolo.
Here.
John Ferreira.
Here.
Gloria Pacheco.
Present.
I'm Cynthia Sevigny, I'm present, and Elizabeth Fandrade is absent this evening. We also have Nina Pavel as our recording clerk. We have a new planner here with us this evening.
Filling in, yes.
And from government TV, we have Craig Salvador. Okay. Old business, receive correspondence. We have a review and a discussion of the Mass DOT project number 609434, Jefferson Street Bridge over Sucker Brook, and that's tabled from the May 11th, 2022 meeting.
Madam Chairman, I can add some information to this. So, this is a project that Mass DOT is working on, and they've been working on it for a number of years dating back, oh, it's gotta be four to five years. So they are undertaking a new design and replacement of that bridge. And the normal course of action is their consultant, who is Hoyle and Tanner, will send out this notification to all of the city departments, Conservation Commission, anyone that could have an interest in the replacement of this bridge structure. This is a structure that has a wooden deck that drains a bordering vegetated wetland to the west, and it actually, on the opposite side of this culvert and the edge of the road, it goes to an underground culvert that actually traverses through the industrial buildings that are down there, and then daylights again at the other end of the development. So this water runs towards the Watupu Pond eventually. Right now, this one's probably over 1,000 feet away, but this is what drains that larger wellin. So this is just notification that it is their project, they're working on it, this is the early design and consultation portion of the project. Normally, the course of action for this is to read it into record, acknowledge it, and place it on file. If you have any other questions, I can probably answer some of them.
Yes, Dan. I do have just one question, because I have been to see this a couple of times. There's no railing on that bridge.
That's correct.
Is there going to be one?
Well, they're in that process now of doing that design. So yes, I would think that.
There will be a railing?
I would, well, what, so the proper course of action is for the planning board to vote on sending a recommendation to Hoyle. This is what they're asking for.
Yes.
They're asking for comments. So if the board would like to entertain a motion to refer correspondence back to Hoyle and Tanner to ensure that railing, guardrail, or protective measures are taken, that would be an appropriate action as well.
Because as you go over on the right side, there is nothing, and it's literally a cliff.
That is the wetland side, correct.
On the other side, you know, you're not going to go into a cliff, because as you said, it's continued.
That's accurate.
Yes, I would certainly like to see a recommendation to, for them to consider a railing. Anyone else from my board?
I second the motion.
I can't make the motion.
I'm sorry.
I'll make the motion. Do I say that? Yes.
To make the recommendation for the railings?
Correct.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I'll send correspondence from the planning department, you know, elaborating on that a little bit, and ensuring that they get that.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Yep. Okay, now we have a new business, and we have a street acceptance, Small and Stanley Street. Request acceptance of Small Street, extended from President Avenue to Dead End, and also 280 feet of Stanley Street, extended from Small Street to Damon Street.
So again, I'll give you a little bit of an update on this. A number of years ago, and I'll tell you exactly what number, what year it was, 2020, the, 2019, sorry, the board voted after an application was made for the acceptance of Small and Stanley Streets. It then went back to the council, went through the normal procedure of having a layout plan done, and during that process, there was opposition that came about from one of the landowners. There's only two landowners along the portion of Stanley. Stanley Street is not constructed. Small Street is constructed, and they're both considered private ways at this point. So what's being asked, and I've met with the fire department, so the Stanley portion of this was driven by a request of the fire department, primarily for emergency access to the Driscoll Rink. So what we did was, I met them on the site, they did not understand the various points of emergency access that already existed. So this is now, the process is to come back to you. The city does not want to accept a way like Stanley Street that is not constructed, that we would then have to go expend funds on a street that serves no purpose, and that the owners of the street don't want either. So the way that this process works is, any, I think it's 10 or 12 taxpayers in the city can petition for a way to be accepted. They don't take into account the people that live on that street. It can be 10 people that live in the south end that want to petition for a street acceptance by someone's house that lives on the north end, for whatever reason, and that triggers the process without much of a discussion. And you don't necessarily get to see all of the semantics of what's happening. So the recommendation now is to only accept Small Street to the northerly terminus of Small, which runs along the opposite end of Stanley. So that would provide access to the Driscoll Rink. So we would be going down, continuing down Small Street till we get to Driscoll. And I don't know if you all have a plan, but I'll show it to you quickly.
None. That's yes.
So originally, the original vote was to accept Small Street, which the pavement ends here now, and Stanley, which was not built. What we would like to do now is a new vote that accepts Small up to this side of Stanley. So the extension of Small through Stanley, and that would give Driscoll Rink public access to Small in the case of emergency. So if for some reason they needed to evacuate the rink, they could come through a gate in this location. We're only going to construct to this end, to what we have. But we want to basically modify what was approved, not to accept the whole portion of Stanley.
Do you know, the same here, this memo, there's concern about the drainage and the water?
Right.
And I'm just concerned, and it says here specifically, quote, "There is no budget for upgrading the water drainage at this time." What are your thoughts on accepting the street, and then will we have issues with flooding, and then is the city going to be brought into this?
Well, I have a different mindset. Let me get Gloria, let me get Cindy through what we want to find out first. Originally, in '21, the board voted to accept all of this. This is not built. What we want to do now is just accept this portion, see this red line? Including this red line, so that way we have access here if we ever need to evacuate.
So Driscoll's on the left side?
This is Driscoll here, yeah.
So Stanley Street here is never going to be completed?
That's correct. That will stay private. Oh, sorry, Gloria, get the mic.
Sorry.
I'm of the mindset that when we accept a way, it should be to a standard that's acceptable to the city. What happens is, the process has always been, the way to get your street fixed, if it's a private way, is to get the city to accept it. And then they say, "Come fix my street."
Exactly.
So that's, we have a catch-22, where we have taxpayers that should be afforded the same services as everybody else does, whether they're on a private or a public way. That's why my thought of accepting Stanley and having to go construct a way, that, I don't agree with that, with that, with them moving in that direction. With Small, we will look at the ability, so right now, if this becomes a city street, that will be improved utilizing Chapter 90 funds, which is the money that the state gives us every year, and we look at a number of streets to redo. Like, I think Kennedy Street's being done this year, so they'll be grinding that. So there are a number of streets that we do every year. This street would now fall on that list. Because it gets accepted through this process, doesn't mean it immediately gets paid. It gets put in line with other streets that need work. And if there are drainage concerns, then that would have to be accommodated, and those funds utilized to correct that. So that will be, when we look at the actual reconstruction, so you're not voting on the reconstruction of it, you're just looking at the street as it exists, do we want to make this a public way? At that point, the city is now responsible for repairs at some time. So your vote does not warrant, or does not force our hand to immediately go and reconstruct this street. Because there are many streets in the city that are far worse than this.
And that's my point. I live on a private way myself.
Yep.
And we pay for everything.
Sure.
The city does not pay. We pay a lot in taxes. We don't get anything from the city. We don't get trash, we don't get snow, we don't get anything. There are benefits to living on a private way as well.
Absolutely.
It's private. And those abutters may be concerned with having people from Driscoll Rink going in and out of that street.
Well, it is emergency access only, so it would be a locked gate, and that would be up for DCR to facilitate. This would just give them the ability, in an emergency, to utilize this portion. So the pavement is not going to go to Driscoll, because a lot of, if you look on the plan, the school's landscaping and fencing actually crosses into.
Yes, yes.
So we're already, the city's already using this, and what happens, we're finding now, is, and I drove by again today, staff at the school park on this private way already to go teach at Spencer boarding. So this is going to help, you know, the homeowners on that street, for one, and it will provide that other additional access.
What about the flooding? Like, what are the current issues with flooding?
I don't know. I've never witnessed myself, you know, any flooding in that area.
Because I'm concerned about taking on another project where, as we know, so many streets in Fall River that are major thoroughfares.
Yep.
Have potholes and are, you know, need more maintenance.
Well, I, moving forward, I think that's the correct stance to take. If you take no action tonight, we've already, we've already taken, gone through the process to take Stanley and Small.
Oh, okay.
So, that's what I'm saying, we're at the 11th hour. So this is, just to get the, so the planning board can't go back. What we're doing is creating a new decision that does away with the Stanley Street portion of this. So although it may not be how you would like to proceed on, if this was a brand-new application.
Right.
But this is not a brand-new one. We're trying to, let's say, cut our losses, and only have to deal with the Small Street portion of this. Because right now, there is, there is almost nothing stopping the paperwork to go through the process, and we will have also taken Stanley. So that process of public hearing, creating a layout plan, having plans prepared, going to the council, council approvals, so we had to go to the council first to remand it back to you, for us to even be having this discussion today. So if you take no action, the previous action will continue. Moving forward, I do think that the board should look very closely at taking over some of these private ways, and the information should be provided to you about the condition of it. So if, moving forward, if the board's going to say, "We're not accepting streets unless they're to a suitable standard," then that's the stance that the board should take. And then people won't necessarily come in and petition, or they'll know the answer before. They won't waste their time theoretically, coming in with, and you're going to see more. Glendale Street, for instance, you all voted, I think, a meeting or two ago.
Right.
Wasn't something that I necessarily would have recommended, however, that's not my, was not my job, and it's not, that's not the process. But as we move forward, whenever these come in, by all means, ask the question, "What is the condition of this street?" You know, and then make that determination. Is this a headache that we want to bear moving forward?
Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you very much.
Can you speak on Small Street?
Oh, yeah, you're here for that, absolutely.
I live on Small Street.
Okay.
37th Small Street.
So, well, there's only a couple houses, so you're at the very end?
It's right on the corner, on the next one end.
Oh, okay.
And I have a handicapped daughter, I've been there 32 years.
Yep.
And our concern, Mark and I, is not so much being tied into Damon Street, but especially if down the road it gets tied into Ellsbury Street, there'll be a big, heavy flow of traffic, it'd be crazy like it is on President Avenue, Ellsbury, and that whole neighborhood, in the morning and afternoon.
So this requested new action tonight will ensure that that does not happen. So the Stanley Street portion of this will be taken out of the petition. We would only be taking the dead-end portion of Small, which should only help your situation. Are you Mr. Maderas?
Yes.
David, okay.
My daughter had the street spots, so like, she'll just dial into the road, going in the driveway, getting ready to go somewhere, and it's like, you always got to keep an eye on her, and sometimes she will step out.
Yeah.
I know it's crazy with the teachers parking there and whatnot, in the morning, they turn on my driveway on the side of the house, that I have no problem with that, it's during the day.
Yeah.
When she's not there. And they're gone when we come home, well, when my daughter comes home, but it's the traffic throughout, you know, the afternoon, the weekend, especially if it gets tied into Ellsbury Street. There'll be, especially kids from high school or college will be flying through there, you know?
So again, what we're, what's before the board today is to do away with that potential connection to Ellsbury Street. Since you're here, do you have knowledge of substantial flooding on that street? Or, no? Okay, good, good to know.
When you go down, when you go down Small Street to the right, just a little flow of water, but it's not flooding.
Yeah, okay.
It'll go down, might be the driveway, or down to the end of the road, and off to where, you talk about cutting that road in, it goes off into that road area. That guy was a landscaper.
A landscaper that used to live at the end of the road, right?
Right.
Yeah.
He just up that whole property.
Yeah.
Before, it used to be all muddy, but he did a good job, you know?
Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Just a question, I'm looking at this, this first time for me, but anyhow, Stanley to the right, which should, for me, I can read in small print, is that dead end right there?
That's the portion, let me get you a bigger plan.
Oh, thank you.
My eyes aren't that good to see that one.
My question's stereo.
So this is Damon Street, okay, which comes all the way out to Ellsbury as well. There are a number of houses here as well. So this dead-end, dead-ended here. Stanley, you were accepting only till the end of Damon. You were not going all the way out to Ellsbury with what you were accepting.
Okay.
So you weren't allowing that to happen already, but this will, this brings it back even further. So Damon will remain a, so exactly what happens on Damon as being a public way will be the same thing on Small Street. That'll ensure that the people get their street plot.
So an access for the people right now is a stance right now, they have to go search a dead end around here.
Well, right now, there's nothing here.
Oh, okay.
That's what I'm saying. By taking this, the way that the last vote was, that these homeowners could come tell us, build us a road. But what happens is, and we're going to try and correct this, when this comes to you initially, you don't see this plan. You don't see what's built. So we're going to make sure moving forward that you're given the information to be able to make, you know, a better decision on some of these things. But this will allow some, I mean, do they do plowing already and trash pickup, or?
I don't.
On your street now, do they plow the street, and do they pick up your trash?
Yeah, get all the services.
So the city's been very good over time by dealing with a lot of these private ways, and really providing services that they don't necessarily have to. So that's at least good that they were doing that, but this will ensure that those services do continue.
Yes, John?
Just a couple of things. One, to Gloria's concern about the gated access that they're looking at there, there's one on Durfee, over by Durfee High School as well, there's a gated access, and I've been, I've been coaching there 11 years, they've never once opened that gate. It's just there, like Dan said, it's locked, it's chained, in the event that they need it, they'll, they could just pop it.
And it's not vehicle access. It's only, it's a pedestrian gate. So when they throw everybody out of the building, they can get off the property, because they do have some chemicals in that building that have to do with maintaining the ice and everything else that, they could have a chemical situation. So they wanted to ensure that they had the ability to get people off. So they were unaware that they had other options already on the site, so that's why they were okay with, all right, we don't need Stanley Street the whole way, so.
Do I make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the revised plan that was pre-approved by us, and with only the Small Street road acceptance and a little extension, and not Stanley Street.
So Small Street to the northerly side of Stanley.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes. And new business, item number two is a Form A. It's an application for endorsement of plan believed not to require approval. It's file number 22-1634. Owner applicant, R&amp;R Consulting Services Incorporated, Ronald Reeny. And property location is 423-425 Division Street, Assessors Map G04-0046. Okay.
So again, board members, this is a Form A, A&amp;R endorsement, approval not required plan for the real estate at 423 and 425 Division Street. I know you get multiple applications similar to this, that they first go through the zoning board of appeals process, and under Section 86423, I think it is, they're afforded a special permit to subdivide these parcels where there are existing structures that were in existence prior to subdivision control law, which was 1954. So they first go through the zoning board of appeals, they look at it, and figure out what is the best way to separate these two buildings. They go through that process, then to clean that up and make it legal, they then have to come to the planning board for endorsement. Now, on these types of things, there are two different ways to deal with it. The applicant could circumvent the zoning board of appeals and just come straight to you under Section 81L, and force you to either sign or just sit on the application, and then they would be afforded a signature from the clerk after the appeal was up. This applicant has done things the correct way, gone through the zoning board of appeals process, they looked at it, they vetted it, what's the best way that we can subdivide this, create the right easements, so that everybody has the right access. This, through this process, they force the applicants to separate water and sewer utilities. If they were to circumvent the zoning part of it, and that's why sometimes people do, as you know, with the multiple tenants in the city, sometimes the back house water and sewer runs through the basement of the first house, and then now you sell it to two different people, and there's a mess. When they do it the correct way, one of the conditions of approval in the special permit is they make them go in and separate those utilities, so that that situation does not happen down the road. So the applicant has done things correctly here, and through the special permit, they've met the requirements for endorsement for an A&amp;R. It's not always, it's not always good, or it's not always great, however, it is the law, and they followed it to its end.
Any discussion from my board members? Do I have a motion?
I motion, we accepted the plan as submitted with severance on record. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And item number three, and additional application for endorsement of plan believed not to require approval, and it's the same owner applicant, R&amp;R Consulting Services Incorporated, Ronald Reeny. And the property location is 34-36 and 40 Hawk Street, Assessors Map GO6-0011. And I'm assuming this is the same type of, of...
I shouldn't have to give that dissertation again, so as we go through.
No, but we like hearing new talk.
No, it's, it's the same process, the same, the same section of law, so.
Same process.
We'll keep it simple on that.
Okay. Board members?
I don't have any question, and this is only the expectation.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to accept the 22-153. Will I endorse it?
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And just so that you know, when you looked at the older agenda, there were two other A&amp;Rs that were on this agenda tonight.
Right.
That you'll see in your packet, I think, that we were able to coerce the applicant to withdraw temporarily, so that they could go through the special permit process. They were moving, they were trying to move through the board under an 81L without going to the zoning board of appeals. So we were able to get them to table, get through the special permit process, and do things the right way, so that'll be our next month's agenda.
That's very good. Thanks. And now?
That was Nina, she was on him like a dog.
She was.
She was.
Thank you, Nina. And we have item number four, a review of a correspondence, review and discussion of notice of activity and use limitations on 65 Alden Street. You must have a lot to say about this.
Actually, there's not, there's not that much, because they're, they're so, they're so common. So again, this is, this is a general correspondence that goes out to a multitude of different municipal agencies. This is off of Alden Street, over almost where Parker Candy used to be, like, not all the way down into the back, but kind of like behind knitting mills, it's a small building. Anytime there is environmental testing that's done on a property for whatever purposes, whether it's to change hands, sale, and a site is determined to be contaminated by DEP's regulations and the law, they have to create what's called an activities and use limitation on the property. That gets recorded at the Registry of Deeds, that's what this document is. So it's on file that is to make people aware, this piece of land has this type of contamination and this type of limitations. That's why it's activity and use limitations, it's putting everyone on notice that this property has limitations and is due to an environmental deficiency. So again, they notify all of the boards, and I'm, I'm assuming you've seen many of them. So again, it's just to make someone aware, it's a formal process that's in the law with DEP, that this notification goes out to all of the different municipal agencies.
We'll receive it and place it on file, no action needed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you want to just make a motion for that?
I'll make a motion that we place this on file, no action needed.
Second?
Aye, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And item number five, we have approval of the minutes of our May 11th, 2022 meeting. And now. Mario, it was just you and I and Gloria.
Yeah, I'm going to abstain, I was not present.
That was present at that meeting to approve these minutes. Do I have a motion?
I reviewed the minutes, they all look accurate. I make a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I make a note that John has abstained. And citizens' input, I believe we've taken care of that. And so, adjournment, do I have a motion to...
Oh, wait, we have a citizen. Whoa.
Oh, no, put your hand down.
I just about the Jefferson Street project where the bridge is, they used to be dammed there, they used to be a pond there. That, what is that, is that going to be returned back to, because now they piped it on one side to, all the way down to the, to the top of Sucker Brook.
Yep.
It was a big pond there at one time, and the pond, they took the dam, they tried, they took the dam off. That bridge was a dam.
So were there water rights, maybe, to some of the mill operators that were down there?
If you go on the other side of the mill, there's a big, another pond over there where they had more water rights. There was a pond, it's deficient, and it's dry, it's just back the woods up, and it's all dried out. There environmentally, is that, does that have to be replaced, or something that...
No, so depending upon the purpose of the dam, and I want to say, there aren't many private dams in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and a number of years ago, they did away with a lot of them, and the state would no longer monitor, and it did create some issues. a lot of them, and the state would no longer monitor it, and it did create some issues. I don't know the history of this one, I can find out and get back to the board and answer that the history is, and what, moving forward, what it is.
There is going to return it back to, I don't know on that dam, they, totally, all that area is owned by the city. The city took, given all that property back, that whole industrial pond. So I'm just wondering if they want to return this, was they dam, I used to measure, they have a log, they moved them up there.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
And they filled the pond up, and then they would, when it overflowed, they just, but, I mean, I don't really care about the pond, but I'm just wondering if they're going to return that back to a pond then. I don't, I don't know, the cost may be prohibitive, or whatever the factor is, if it's interesting if they want to do that, if it's part of the project. Okay, that's it, for me.
And before you adjourn, if I can-
Yes.
And you all noticed that Caitlin Young is not here this evening, she's not going to be with the city any longer, which is a sad loss for her, and for us, you know, very much so, she's a very talented young lady, but I'd at least like to publicly thank her for her service to the city and all the hard work that she's done, and she's laid the groundwork for a lot of great things, but at this time, she's going to move on in a different direction, that's why I'm here tonight, helping cover that in to a degree. So we'll be seeking some new planning staff, and hopefully fill some of the spots soon, but I did want to acknowledge her and her hard work and her efforts on behalf of the city for the short time that she was here, but she will be missed, for sure.
Thank you, Dan.
For me personally, if you talk to her, just wish her good luck and all that.
Her husband came in today, we had a nice discussion, and I'll pass along your well wishes, for sure.
Yep.
That's all. Now you can adjourn.
Now I can adjourn. Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Give a second.
A second.
And it is 606.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Put your hand up.
She wasn't saying favor.